I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
For a second.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion is carried, and we will begin with the superintendent and student member of the board report.
Fantastic. September 28th. We have started this year working with Casey Page, who is the instructor of graphic arts over at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And what we've said is, as we go through this year, and each month, there are fantastic recognitions, there are really interesting things that are happening in our community. There are things that make St. Mary's St. Mary's, and so she is going to be working with her students to create different themed logos, where we take our book with the pages that turn into a sale, that set sail. And so Ms. Page actually designed this one as just kind of a model to give her kids an idea. And that is an aerial shot of the, in the evening of the county fair that just happened over the weekend. So, we will be including these logos in the board update each month, and then we'll also be distributing them to be sent out. We've seen previews because they've been working on them, they are incredible. Wait till you see some of these really dynamic and incredible reimagined logos for St. Mary's County. Then we want to put them all on one big page, and it'll be a lot of fun. So, fantastic program over at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, and Casey Page, just an absolute treasure in the work that she does with kids. What a visual eye. And it's so appropriate as we're recognizing our student artists from across the county who've been sharing their work with us throughout the summer. So, as we've started pretty much every single meeting for the last year and a half, please come join us. The list is getting shorter, the opportunities are narrowing, we still have an opportunity for special ed teachers. I did not refresh that, there's only six. It looks like there's 11, but I updated it, there are only six special ed teacher vacancies as of right now. So, they're going fast. Get them while they're good. Elementary teachers, we have three vacancies. High school mathematics, we have two, but we do have long-term subs that are in there. We have one Spanish teacher, so, Spanish, it's a good thing, it's a lot of fun to teach Spanish. We have one teacher for the visually impaired, we have three speech pathologists, we always need a speech pathologist. If you have a child that's rising and going off to college and like, I don't know what I want to become, become a speech pathologist. You are in high demand. A school counselor and one registered nurse, so we are whittling away at that list. As always, all the people who support the work that happens in the classroom, we are still looking for accountants and payroll specialists, building services staff, bus attendants and bus drivers, food service staff, maintenance staff, parent educators, secretaries, and teacher apprentices. Teacher apprentices in particular, it's a great way, if you're interested in becoming a teacher, you might want to take a look at that. You can come and join with us as you pursue your degree in education, a great opportunity. Blueprint for Maryland's Future, we have agreed that we would put this information out at least once a month, just to let you know that we continue to do this work. It is all available on the homepage, the front page of our website, under that little button where you see Blueprint Update. When you go to Blueprint Update, you're going to find all kinds of stuff about the Accountability Implementation Board. That's the board that's deciding exactly how and how we shall all be held to account for the money that's being made available to pursue the new vision for St. Mary's County and Maryland public schools. There's a great deal of information. Once again, there are now five pillars, early childhood, teachers and leaders, rigorous college and career pathways, resources to ensure all students are successful, and governance and accountability. We just had a meeting yesterday where we pulled everybody together in this room, where we've gone through, even though the plan isn't officially, won't be officially due until March, we've been doing a great deal of work. There are reports that we have created as we've gone through, they're also available clicking through and linking through on that site. Please, if you have any interest, there's a great deal of information out there about all the work that's going on in St. Mary's County public schools. This upcoming week, next week, is Building Service Workers Appreciation Week. I can't say enough about the tireless work of the people who come in and make sure that the buildings are ready for learning every single day. They do so in an incredibly positive way. Many of them are directly interacting with students, and some even mentoring students and being involved in extracurricular and after-school activities. Just a really wonderful group of people. So, next week, as you are in our schools or your children are attending schools, have them reach out and say thank you to the people who are responsible for making sure that we have the fantastic, clean, and wonderful facilities that we do have.
Can I add on that?
Sure.
Especially for the high school building service workers, I mean, night games, Friday nights, sometimes they don't end until 10:30, 11 o'clock. So, they are there until every last person leaves, especially with all the sports going on now. So, extra thank you because they are definitely above and beyond.
Yes, the schools open sometime around 6:30, and many of them do not cease their operations until 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night. And it's the building service workers who are opening and closing those buildings and making sure that everybody has what they need. So, September, look at that, oh my gosh, we are almost to the end of September, it is amazing. We have gone through, we are already through, this is week six of the first marking period, how about that? Of note, we have the board meeting tonight, the NAACP branch meeting, I'm going to be coming out to the Church of the Ascension tomorrow night and speaking with them. I believe I'm going to be joined by Principal Dothard. Look forward to that evening, I think it's going to be a great opportunity to interact with our larger community. We roll into Thursday, or Thursday, we roll into October, just next week. It's hard to believe that we are already in the month of October. And really, October is going to have a two-hour early dismissal on Monday, another board meeting, a two-hour dismissal on a Friday, another board meeting, a two-hour early dismissal on the 28th, and that ends the first marking period. We will be one quarter of the way through the school year. So, moving forward, moving forward, moving forward. I will tell you that I'm going to hand this off now to the student member of the board, because we have had a great deal of fun over the last couple of days, starting on a journey that's going to take us from one end of the county to the other. Mrs. Swar.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Monasa, and I'm the student member of the board this year. As you can see on the slides today, we're going to talk about school visits, because that is what I have been up to recently. So, first of all, I would just like to thank the fifth graders of Piney Point Elementary School and White Marsh Elementary School for letting Dr. Smith and I into your learning environments for an afternoon. If you're watching this, hi, I promised I'd share, didn't I? And, and a little background, what we're talking about with our fifth graders is, we're talking about using our voices, making ourselves heard. We're talking about using those voices that we have for kindness, and we're also talking about what we like at school. We're talking about what could maybe be a little bit better at school. And these fifth graders that I've met are just also incredibly capable and smart, and it's my turn to share what they have told us. And if you go to an elementary school that we haven't been to yet, fear not, because we will be there soon. So first, let's talk about Piney Point. This was the first elementary school visit that Dr. Smith and I got to do on Tuesday, September 20th. First of all, oh my gosh, Piney Point is just so full of color that it makes you want to learn. I don't know, I just, I noticed that, it was very exciting. And the students were all eager to participate, and it felt like a million hands were up to answer each and every question that we had for them. So, they shared that they love reading, which I was very excited about, because I love reading. And they shared that they love spending time with their friends, they love their teachers, they love science and math. And interestingly enough, Piney Point has a student council that they're starting up soon. So, isn't that very cool, an opportunity to share their voices while they're still in elementary school, that's pretty unique. And then another thing that they said they loved was PE, physical education. So that brings me to what they wanted to share about what could be a little bit better. They were really adamant that they want more PE or more recess, and just more time to run around and get their energy out each day. And I thought that was incredibly self-aware, as they also shared that they felt like they could learn and focus a little bit better when they had some more time to, you know, let that energy out. And then also, Piney Point has something unique, they have canoes at their school, and they said it, they want new canoes. And then also, it seemed to be immediately unanimous that the fifth graders at Piney Point want a taller fence around their recess area, because they keep losing equipment over the fence, so they wanted to share that. And as soon as one person said that, everyone was just like, yeah, we need a fence. And then, so just finally, I want to thank you, Piney Point Beacons, and I want to thank Ms. Plagie, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Wood, the awesome fifth grade teachers there, as well as Principal Courtney for hosting us and for providing the wonderful educational environment and education itself for students that Piney Point truly is and has shown me. So, now, let's talk about yesterday's visit to White Marsh. The fifth graders were ready to participate in our discussion yesterday, they had done their homework and had watched one of my previous reports already. Here I was introducing myself, and they were all just thinking, let's get into the conversation. Well, we did have an awesome conversation. White Marsh also really loves math and science, specifically science experiments. They missed most of third grade, and last year had a little less freedom for that kind of stuff. So, they're excited to do more of that this year, more experiments. And WMES also loves reading, they told us all about their favorite books to read, and I have to say that a lot of them made me smile, because they were familiar. The Thirty-Nine Clues series, I Survived, Diary of a Wimpy Kid, and more. And then, they also love to do the Bear Crawl, which is something I have never heard of until yesterday, which is a monthly event at White Marsh where students with perfect attendance for that month get to crawl down the hallways and roar at the top of their lungs. So, it's a fun incentive, I've never heard of that, I love that. And then, another thing that I absolutely loved was hearing about this thing called mindful moments that they do. So, it's a set of strategies at White Marsh that helps students cool down when they're frustrated. So, you know, they walk away from a situation and they just take a mindful moment. And also just to get ready for a day during morning announcements. So, some of these strategies include stretching, journaling about goals, and other things as well. And then, another cool thing that they shared was that they have a unique form of a career day. So, instead of parents coming and talking about it, the fifth graders research a career that they're interested in, and then they present it to the other classes. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then, speaking of future careers, one thing that White Marsh wants to see more of is opportunities to learn coding and technology. So I thought that was pretty cool, a lot of them were very handy. As you can see in the slide, Kurt, he made this like hand, and it's articulated, and they can move, and I thought that was incredible. I couldn't do that, and he did, so it's pretty cool. A lot of them are very interested in that kind of thing, you know, that technical kind of thing. And then, also, White Marsh and Piney Point both want to see more school, like intramural sports. So like after school, you know, just an opportunity, again, to run around and play. And then, lastly, I wanted to thank the fifth grade teachers, Ms. Cord and Ms. Wathen, as well as Principal Steele at White Marsh for hosting us and letting us into this wonderful little family that is the White Marsh Bears. I can see how close-knit that school is, and how much care you all have for each other. And it makes a difference in the life of a student to have a safe environment like that, I can definitely say that. And then, students at both schools told us that they feel like they can talk to their teachers about anything, and that they love their teachers very much. So that brings me to a final thank you, once again, to the teachers and staff of SMCPS, you are so important. And, yeah, I look forward to visiting the other 17 elementary schools in the coming weeks with Dr. Smith. And then, in other news, I visited the fair this past weekend, as many did, and I got to see some really fantastic artwork from students pre-K through 12, from all across SMCPS, a bunch of people performed too. So, the last thing I have to say is, keep working hard, SMCPS, and I know I'm getting redundant at this point, but I will keep saying it, I am so proud of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And for all of us who have judged the White Marsh Science Fair, year after year after year, it is quite extensive. But it does not surprise me that they want to do more science experience, yes.
Mom teaches there, she's a fourth grade teacher.
Okay, so we have Dr. Marr, Giant Food, United Way.
All right, and Dr. Smith, if you would mind joining me at the podium. And I'd also like to invite up to join us Tim Baker, the district manager of Giant Foods, Philip Padapali, the giant store manager, Mr. Mel Brennan, the CEO of United Way of Southern Maryland, and Susie Fowler, a former principal in St. Mary's County, as well as a leader of this community effort and the board chair of United Way of Southern Maryland. It is my honor to take this opportunity to thank Giant Food for their generous donation to St. Mary's County Public Schools for the 2022 Nourishing Our Youth Roundup Program to support the fight against hunger in St. Mary's County. Their donation of $26,413 will go directly to the Snack Sack Program in partnership with the United Way Snack Sack Program. For the last decade, the United Way Campaign has supported the Snack Sack Program, which helps fill the gap of hunger for students during the weekends where other food resources may not be available, such as free and reduced meals that are at our schools. When the program began 10 years ago, this girl blazer here, Ms. Fowler, it served about 10 students at Lexington Park Elementary School. And their goal was to expand it to reach other schools, well, they certainly have. Now that goal is being met. As a result of the United Ways Campaign, over 4,000 snack sacks were distributed last year across Charles and St. Mary's County. And this generous donation from Giant Food will provide over 2,500 snack sacks for students. And we thank you on behalf of all of our students. Dr. Smith?
And so, I really don't have any prepared remarks, other than to say, what a fantastic community that we live in, where we can see the direct contribution of people doing something as simple as rounding up a total ultimately accumulates to a sizable amount of money that can do such an impactful bit of very, very, very good. I would like to put Susie Fowler on the spot if I could, and then perhaps Mr. Brennan as well. But first, any comments from Giant Food, please?
One thing you will learn from Giant is, when we get an opportunity, we absolutely take it. So, I've never been called to the principal's office, and I was a little bit nervous, but I remember reading an article from Warren Buffett, and it was the day he signed a check for $30 billion to an organization. And he was talking to a teacher, and the teacher said to him, "I'll never be rich. I'll never have the kind of money I need to do what you do." And I remember his article, and what he said is, "You are richer than you ever can imagine." Because the day I wrote that check, I handed it to someone, and they carried it to this organization, Bill Gates Foundation. And he goes, "Every day when you go to school, a little kid's going to run up and hug your leg. Every day, you're going to tell him it's okay when he's crying, and when he's 10, you're going to help him, and when he's 18, you're going to help him. And when he's 30, and his kids are there with you again, that's what makes you rich." So, we don't know how to say thank you, other than to say thank you to our teachers and our parents. You're amazing. If it wasn't for you, where would we be? And ultimately, we believe in teach, train, develop, inspire, motivate. And that's something that we do every day at Giant Food, we believe in taking care of our communities. But you can't take care of a child if a child is hungry. And I've been with Giant for 44 years, and a store manager for 10 years in the city, Washington DC. And I remember kids coming in, stealing food to eat, not candy, but food, because they were hungry. And we started to say, how do we help fix this? And this is just one of the programs of many that we're into. And right now, through this program, we've already donated $765,000 throughout our community. And we are extremely proud to donate to 26,400, right? Also, don't get to 13, but absolutely an amazing group, and thank you very much for inviting us. And anything that you need, you know Phil, he's your store manager in California. We did bring Melissa, our assistant manager, as well, and again, thank you again for inviting us.
Anything you would like to speak on?
No one should ever tell me that. But thank you. So, when I became the principal at Lexington Park Elementary, I was astounded by the number of hungry children at our school. I had been a principal previously at a higher socioeconomic school, and I just had never seen the depths of poverty and hunger in our children. This in the midst of the affluence that exists here in St. Mary's County. And many people don't realize it, we have to keep the word going so that people understand hunger in our community is real. And we need to address it. Snack sacks has been a wonderful way of supporting children at home on the weekend. It's about eight pounds of healthy snacks that children can manage themselves. They can open the cans or the jars, they can put the macaroni and cheese in the microwave, and they can benefit and share with their siblings, because all of them we've talked to have talked about the fact that it's not just for them. They share, because they don't want anybody in their family to be hungry. If there's food, they want it to benefit, they want the food to benefit all of the people in their family. So, I have been a proponent of snack sacks for the past 10 years or so, and I will continue to be, because there should not be a hungry child in our community. We can address this, and as a community, we need to come together to do it. So, for those of you watching at home, you can visit the United Way of Southern Maryland website and click any one of the multiple donate buttons that we have. And you don't have to donate specifically for snack sacks, because of course, we do have other needs in our community. But, you know, snack sacks is a great cause to support, and we urge everyone in our community to help the United Way of Southern Maryland meet needs in the area of financial stability, health, education, and basic needs. Because that's what we do, we help people, and those are our focus areas. And thank you, Dr. Smith, for this opportunity, I appreciate it very much.
Good evening, I'll speak. Good evening, I'll speak very quickly, because I'm not going to cover any ground that these folks have already covered, other than to make sure that I say that, in addition to the deep and abiding thank you that we have for the folks from Giant Foods who have made the decision to function as a lens for the giving of the community, this also happened because of our superintendent. Superintendent Smith and his team had a conversation with this leadership team and made a decision to include the United Way in this facilitation of dollars. So it was, I want to make sure that, Dr. Smith, you are not left out of that, thank you very much. And just to add to what Susie said about United Way, you know, this snack sacks was really an answer to an abiding question. And the question was, well, if you're on free and reduced lunch, and you get that at school, what happens on the weekend? And a lot of us felt that question most viscerally when schools were closed during the pandemic. What happens to those kids? Well, this is a question that we ask every weekend. And the goal of the new United Way of Southern Maryland is to ask those questions, right, and to forge solutions in the areas that Susie talked about. So whether it's health, education, financial stability, or basic needs, this is your United Way. And we're here to receive those questions and challenges from you, and to solve for them with the individuals who are vulnerable and need help, and the agencies with which we partner. So thank you very much.
You want to take a quick picture right now?
I'll go ahead and get the picture. Dr. Smith, if you want.
Yeah, so we'll have everybody. So how tall are you?
Six seven.
I knew that question was. You saw them pointing this way.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
So everyone, keep rounding up when you shop at Giant.
Round up, round up.
Use it bonus cards. Okay, Mr. Todd Burrows, you somewhere, I see you.
Look at that, Mr. Burrows, we've already talked about art, many of the kids talked about how important it was to have art, and how much they loved their art classes, so.
I was seeing Miss Neal today after your visit, and then she said that was mentioned.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
If you would care to join us.
All right, I'm a little bit shorter.
Yes.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we are here once again to recognize some of our outstanding young artists. We will be celebrating student artwork that appeared in the 2021-2022 school year's fourth quarter superintendent's art gallery. For the gallery, student artwork is selected to be displayed in the Board of Education meeting room and in the hallway leading to Dr. Smith's office. The arts and engagement in the creative process provides our students with a safe emotional outlet that allows them to express and celebrate who they are. As I've said here many times, we are incredibly fortunate that Dr. Smith, Dr. Montgomery, Dr. Marr, Mrs. Bachner, and our Board of Education members are such strong advocates for our arts programs. Through their support, we are able to continue programs such as the one we are celebrating here tonight. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate, and then we will ask for you to remain. At the end of the recognitions, there will be opportunities for individual and group photos. Please note, the school listed on the artwork denotes the school in which the artwork was created. So, without further ado, let's celebrate our artists. All right, from Evergreen Elementary School, with the piece Balloon Dog, Orly Anderson.
Everybody watching?
And thank you to Principal Jamison and Mrs. Ryan, art teacher, for attending. All right, representing, excuse me, Chautauqua High School, with the piece Family Home, Madeline Braitham. And thank you to Principal Perner for being here tonight. Not in attendance, but we would like to recognize from the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, with the piece Self Portrait, William Cole. Also not in attendance, but we would like to recognize from Margaret Brent Middle School, with the piece Untitled, Braylon Hill. From Town Creek Elementary School, with the piece Fish Stick, Chloe Lowery. And thank you to Principal Brenfleck for being in attendance. From Hollywood Elementary School, with the piece Gorilla Named Penguin, Landry Phillips. And thank you to art teacher, Mr. Newark, for being here tonight. And from George Washington Carver Elementary School, with the piece Zinnias on Yellow Background, Zendaya Shubrooks. And thank you to Principal Thorsonson for being here tonight as well.
We're good. Just take a quick picture with all of them, and then we'll do the recognition for the bus drivers, and then we'll break pictures with all of them.
Congratulations, student artists.
All right, so the third week of October, know this little R-Lix, we have some conflicts in October. But the third week of October is recognized in the country as National School Bus Safety Week, and it's also recognized by the governor of Maryland as School Bus Safety Week in Maryland. In St. Mary's County, we also recognize October 17th through October 21st as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week. Our bus drivers and bus attendants are a key part to keeping our school system and our students in school every day, and keeping our school system a success. We are so fortunate that our dedicated drivers and attendants have provided continuous service throughout the school year last year, and have made our school system have a successful school opening this year. We are, you know, we can't say that for all of our surrounding neighbors, but our system and our drivers and their dedication were above par in keeping our schooling last year and this year. Tonight, I have three drivers. Tonight, I have three drivers who are great representatives for our drivers and attendants, so I'm going to ask them to come up. So Rob McDaniel, Connie, and Tasha, if you guys would come up. So just, I'd like to introduce them first, and then I'd like to ask Dr. Smith to come up and read the proclamation, if you would. Ms. Connie Steele, Constance Steele, she's certified in November of 2011. She drives bus 638 for J.R. Whalen Bus Service. She currently has routes for Margaret Brent Middle School and White Marsh Elementary School. And she also helps us transport a student to the Lab School in Georgetown each week, which has varying schedules, but she makes it work for us with the help of Charles County. But those things require a lot of effort to get those students to and from, or out-of-county students. Next, we have Mr. Rob McDaniel. Rob was certified also in 2011, in May of that year. He drives a special needs bus 238 for Bradburn Bus Service. He currently has routes for Great Mills Ridge, Green Holly, or Green Beanoles, sorry, Lattner Town Middle School and Park Hall. Did I get them all? Did I miss any?
Oh, my goodness.
And lastly, we have Ms. Tasha Barnes. And Tasha was certified in April of 2003. She's been with us a long time, 20 years. She currently drives bus 578 for Uncle Transport. She has routes currently at Esperanza Middle School, Green Beanoles Elementary School, and Lexington Park Elementary School. And I want to give a big shout out to Tasha because last year, amongst our challenges with sub-drivers and lack of sub-drivers and different items that we faced, Tasha stepped up and helped cover a lot of different routes that she had to double up on and run back and forth, and so she was just always willing to say yes and give a helping hand to get our kids to and from school. So she really put a big effort in last year. So now I'll ask Dr. Smith to come up and read the proclamation.
All right, let's see if I can. All right. Whereas the week of October 17 through the 21st, 2022, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation. And whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and school bus attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for their importance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the week of October 17 through the 21st, 2022, as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize their school bus drivers and their school bus attendants for safety, for safely transporting St. Mary's County Public School students to school each day, and it's signed today, September 22nd, 2020, pardon me, the 28th day of September, 2022. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
I would, before we, can we do a picture? And we'll have. So we've got a lot of time. You could really be planning for how you want to appreciate bus drivers and bus driver attendants. You've got a little bit of run-up here, so we'll, should be a fantastic week.
Okay, so we will take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
So everyone can take their pictures, grab their artwork.
All right. Come on up, grab your.
Number 41. Well, you're just walking your time. We've got a lot of stuff to do here.
Oh, yeah, we do. Okay.
Okay, we do not have a public hearing this evening. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, may we do.
Okay. So Brian, if you call the first person up, I have read the statement, and then we can start.
Madeline Teeter.
Okay, so this will govern all of our public comment speakers. We welcome public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider it, not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. Additionally, please keep in mind that we also sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. Speakers must sign at the beginning of the meeting, which obviously you've already done. Your comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. If you have any written statements, you can give them to Brian, and then he'll make sure that they get into board docs. So Brian will set a timer. If you don't mind wrapping up your comments once you hear the timer go off, that would be fantastic.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm Madeline Teeter. I am happy to hear about all the good things happening in St. Mary's County Public Schools. However, I have come here tonight to cast light on a disturbing practice found in St. Mary's County Public Schools. I am talking about the treatment which violates the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Act of Special Education Students. In accordance with a host of research, IDEA became law in 1990. Here we are in 2022, and the provisions of that law are being violated. How else would, could we characterize the isolation of special education students in a resource room when the least restrictive environment appropriate for them is an inclusive classroom with a requisite general ed and special ed teacher? Not only does the segregation of these special ed students rob them of educational opportunities, it cripples their development of critical social skills, which are often the underpinnings of their successfully holding jobs as adults. The students in these resource rooms are often warehoused with little meaningful instruction. In one such resource room, all students are provided with the same worksheets, no matter what their capabilities are. As a matter of fact, kids who cannot even hold a pencil have been labeled uncooperative when they are not able to draw or mark worksheets, although they could respond to visual choices or oral questions. Many parents in St. Mary's County assume that the schools are doing right by their children. Their blind faith and the many demands on their time have allowed St. Mary's County Public Schools to continue to subject special education students to damaging containment for years. Finally, a few parents have become aware of the damaging pattern of warehousing their children. But when they address the issue with school personnel, they are met with obfuscation, passive aggression, and lies. That is a matter of record in emails between parents and school board employees, and you can find them. When I began teaching in 1970, I was a special ed student who were kept away from their age mates, resulting in derision by typically developing students who did not have the opportunity to know them, and isolation from role models who would have been invaluable. The dyslexic kids who were often unidentified were considered lazy or stupid. As a matter of fact, when I was one of the first educators in Prince George's County to seek training for teaching dyslexic students, even the administrators joked that SLRD, Specific Language and Reading Development, was an acronym for Slow Learner Real Dumb. I had thought that those days were behind us. However, it seems that we may not have come even close to what I had hoped for as a young teacher, nor as one with over 40 years of teaching experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katherine Groob.
My name is Katherine Groob. I'm the parent of four school-aged children in St. Mary's County. I'm a local business owner committed to hiring individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities as well. I'm aware of the upcoming opening for a new special, Director of Special Education. I implore you, as a parent of a child who receives special education services in St. Mary's County, to look for a candidate who will ensure that both the federal and state laws, IDEA and COMAR, are followed throughout all schools in St. Mary's County. Move SMCPS forward in special education to a more research-based, innovative, and inclusive model for special education. Three, be accountable for outcomes of special education programs, and look at current programs to make sure they're achieving the goal that we want for all students, to have an independent, meaningful, and productive role in our community. Not for, not to be afraid to look at other systems in Maryland with better outcomes in special education. As examples to strive for. Five, be responsive to and collaborative with parents of children receiving special education services. Six, to look specifically at programs that segregate special education students and work to be more aligned with both the IDEA and SMCPS policy, which states, "Special education outcomes are best achieved when instruction is provided alongside typically developing peers. Students with disabilities will have access to all aspects of academic and extracurricular programming." Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Sarah Penrod here speaking as President of Education Association of St. Mary's County. And I'm here because I really want to congratulate Dr. Farrell and the Human Resource Department on the great job filling empty positions in a time when recruiting is really difficult and school systems all over the nation are struggling to fill teaching positions. And I know that there are still several paraeducator and teacher positions that are still open, but I know that our human resources team is managing to fill them as well as they can when finding anybody who wants to take these positions is extremely challenging. Recruitment and retention are things that we are also looking in during the Blueprint Committee, particularly Bill Jerome programs, and I think those are really critical in this time in this county. I know personally, I have mentored several teacher interns, and two of them actually teach Spanish in this county for us. So I encourage all of my colleagues to look into that and to mentor those people and congratulate those who are mentoring brand-new teachers because we really need to. because we really need to retain those new teachers. Our newest teachers are the ones that are most at risk of leaving the profession within their first couple of years, and we can't have that. So all of this work that we are doing together is going to link the groundwork for when we are actually at the negotiations table coming up soon to negotiate blueprint stuff. So thank you to Dr. Farrell and the Human Resources and the Board for supporting all of our hard work on this.
Thank you.
That's all, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of September 14th, 2022, personnel, teachers, and personnel administrative and supervisory. And so I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, motion is carried. We have no action items this evening. Let's see, we have three information items. The first one is Ms. Cheryl Long, and I don't think Mr. Wyant is with you tonight.
No.
Wyant, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And we have student information updates. Near and dear to my own heart.
Yes.
Yes.
Mine, too.
Might have started a domino cascading effect, perhaps.
You afforded us an opportunity to do a better job.
Look at that. Dr. Martin even get out of his seat.
I know. I was like, I heard something on the corner of my ear.
He was sneaking about it, and that was enough.
I was like, is he coming? Okay, the importance of updating student information, very, very important. This evening, I'm going to focus on four areas. Student contact information, which is the emergency contact information that we have in our student information system, the acceptable use policy, meal benefits forms, and Impact Aid survey. These are four things that we really need our parents and guardians to attend to at the beginning of each school year. The student contact information, student contacts are identified as parents and guardians, emergency contacts, and any other designated contact that the parent or guardian chooses. And like I said, that information, those contacts are housed in our student information system. They contain the address, phone numbers, and emails of those folks. And we ask our parents and guardians to identify at least one emergency contact as they give us that list. So, so important that this information is updated at the beginning of each school year. This is where we go to have, it's our starting point for all parent contacts and communications through SMCPS. It includes the system school-wide messages, School Messenger, which emails and phone contacts that come out through all the schools, SchoolAGI, Naviance, and especially during emergencies, if there's ever any emergencies or if we ever have a need to enact our reunification process, this is where we go and this is where we get the information. So it is so, so important that parents, especially at the beginning of the school year, but then throughout the year as well, if there's any changes to the information, they can call the school after October. After October, they can call the school to update if there's changes throughout the year. Also, the contacts that parents provide for us, those folks are able to pick up and transport their student as well. So that's important to know. How is that information updated? Between the window of October 3rd and October 31st, parents will see in HAC, in Home Access Center, there will be the Emergency Information Update Form. It is a pre-populated form with the information that they've currently given us, and it gives them the opportunity to go in there and make any changes that need to happen to update that information. And as I said, after that October 31st deadline, any changes, please call the school directly and report that. The acceptable use policy, that parents hopefully have already seen that go out. That is, I know they have, because we have many parents that have completed the acceptable use policy. This is very, very important. Acceptable use policy talks about the policies and procedures for our students who use the one-to-one technology. Specifically, SchoolAGI and Google Apps for Education are critical components to their education, and they're using them every day. So your attention to the acceptable use policy, completing that and submitting that to your school is very important. Information has gone out from the schools to parents through the S'mores Communications that the schools put out, as well as you can access that through the Student Handbook and on the SMCPS website. And we've had many families complete those, but we still need folks to attend to those, because we still have many outstanding. After October 1st, any families that have not completed that form, the school will contact them directly as a reminder to get that completed. Meal benefit forms, as we've been talking about in the past couple of years during COVID, there wasn't the requirement that families do that as meals were provided for all of our students. But now the requirement is reinstated. So this year, if families believe they may be eligible for the meal benefit of free and reduced meals, we strongly encourage them to feel that, to complete that form. And we've had many applications submitted already, many, many applications submitted. But, you know, they still have time to do that. And that is accessible on our SMCPS website on the homepage. It's in our scrolling banner, but also under the Meal Services button on the right-hand side as well. They can access that. And through their myschoolapps.com as well. Impact Aid is, we, every year we ask parents to complete the Impact Aid survey. We have many students that are federally connected, meaning that their parents or guardians either work, either live or work on federal property or active-duty personnel. The school gets federal grant funds for our programming. And to receive that funding, we have to have our families complete the survey. So between October 3rd and November 14th, again through Home Access Center, they will, parents will see that survey being pushed out. Please, please complete that survey. Very beneficial for us in our, in our schools. So those four things, four things we need our families to attend to right away. The student contact information, acceptable use policy, meal benefit forms, and Impact Aid survey.
So I have a question. Since we don't really, I mean, don't string me up. I mean, we use HAC, but we don't really use HAC as much on a daily basis as what we did before now that we have SchoolAGI. So how are you going to push this out, like all of these dates? Like, will it come through the S'mores at the school? Will we get an email from HAC that says these are open and available to update? Like, how is that going to happen?
Definitely through the S'mores. In HAC, I'm going to phone a friend here, maybe Ms. Mills, or Kate through HAC. What are the emails? Like, what?
Well, I mean, so like, for instance, I get emails from SchoolAGI, right? That says, hey, you know, your kid didn't turn in this assignment, or, you know, your principal can send out a system-wide or a school-wide email that this is what needs to happen. So I don't know if that would be beneficial, too, to send that out through SchoolAGI to say, hey, everyone now go over to HAC, and these are the forms that you're going to have to fill out, and these are the dates.
Right.
Because, like, I don't go onto HAC as much as I did before we implemented SchoolAGI, because I really don't need to, because none of the assignments are in there anymore.
Sure.
So, you know, I mean, like, we're still relying on HAC.
So HAC has never moved away from being the repository of school information, such as your child's, your daily attendance, your report cards, your transcripts, your test scores, and all of your registration information. So this is the way it has been since HAC came about. We will absolutely make sure that we are sending out information in the S'more. We will be sending out notices to everybody through School Messenger with the links directly into Home Access Center. So once you receive the email, you would just click right through it, and it'll take you right to HAC to fill out all of those forms.
If they're wrong already in School Messenger.
It is.
Case in point, if they're wrong now in School Messenger, then I'm not going to get the email.
Right, which is why the very first part, making sure. If you are a parent and you have not been receiving your SchoolAGI messages, the School Messenger, if you haven't been receiving information from your school, you should be right now saying to yourself, I bet there is an issue. I should contact the school. There have been an incredible amount of things sent out already, and I think we're tracking that down. You in particular, your case was a fantastic opportunity to delve deeply into a data field that was not properly updating, which has since been addressed. So thank you very much for helping us.
We'll see for my next call-out from Principal Prendergast.
Yes.
Let's see if it works.
We'll make that one count.
My kid's in the dark, so.
Right.
Okay, I was just saying, like, I mean, you know, because the SchoolAGI messages are coming out consistently, right? And for those parents that opted in to see your children's assignments, that's a great way to push that one more thing out.
Yes. And in fact, we just rolled out a great deal of reporting for our school-level leaders and administrators to be able to see how often everybody is truly accessing the SchoolAGI platform and things such as that. So ultimately, I think we will be able to drill into the point where we see somebody who's not engaging, and perhaps we can reach out more actively and find out why. Whenever we do a phone out, whenever we do anything, there's a report that comes back that says, here are all the people. Here are all the do-not-answer. Here are all the emails that are non-responsive, that kind of a thing. So it is, it's a complex system of trying to communicate with 17,600 families. A lot of information, but these are extremely, this is extremely important homework for our parents who are partnering with us. Make sure the contact information is correct so that we can contact you, so you can get all of that. Making sure that you do the acceptable use form, because if we don't have one on file, Google can ultimately restrict access, if not push kids off the entire Google platform. And Impact Aid, and the farms, we are already over 40, we think we're going to end up in the 40s, like, over 40% of our children receiving free and reduced meals. So people are filling out those forms. We just don't want anybody to miss out on a benefit that they're entitled to. And Impact Aid, I mean, that's a great deal of money that comes to the system, because people who are, you know, active military and things like that, they may not be paying, you know, state taxes. It depends on where they're registered, and so this is a way to equalize that, because we have such a percentage of the population that's federally connected.
Can I say something about the Impact Aid? I don't know if you have, what's Dawn's last name?
Dawn Simpson.
Does she push it out to the different?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, she's a great partner. Very involved.
Yeah, and I mean, this is a federal form, so.
Why do you know if it shows up at the different commands, saying if you have a child that is currently enrolled?
I know that Ms. Simpson in the past has been extremely beneficial in making sure that that information gets out.
And my point was just that, you know, as the military is transferring from base to base, this is not something that's new to them, because it's something that everybody has to fill out. So it's just a function of making sure that people are aware, because those dates sneak up on you. So, yeah.
October's a busy month for parents. Please make sure you do your homework.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mills.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jill Mills, Director of Assessment and Accountability, along with Ms. Tammy Burr, the Supervisor of Assessments. And this evening, we will be sharing with you the SAT scores that were administered in March of 2022. Okay? So why take the SAT, the SAT? Post-pandemic, many colleges and universities are no longer requiring students to take the SAT. However, they are still using the students' SAT scores for scholarships, for application packages, and for determining placement in honors programs. So there are very many benefits associated with taking the SAT. And an overview of the SAT, what is the SAT? The SAT has two main sections. There are evidence-based reading and writing and math. And each section is divided into two subsections. And unlike the SAT of the past, you are no longer penalized for incorrect answers. So you can take an educated guess, and it won't be counted against you. And this time, Ms. Burr is going to walk you through our data.
Okay, the data that you have in front of you here is from the School Day SAT that we administered on March 23rd, 2022. So these results are for those students who took the assessment on that particular day. And the all-state and the all-country results, the last two lines, are for School Day administrations given throughout the state and across the country. And those administrations took place in either March or April of 2022. So the results up here are for the current seniors who took the test when they were juniors, as SMCPS offered the test to all juniors who attended school. It's important to note that while we don't have stats on these specific students, because they're just seniors this year, the class that just graduated, the class of 2022, those students, 47% of them, the only SAT they took was during our School Day administration. So it has a far-reaching impact, but you're seeing nearly half of our students' participation comes from the administration that we offer during the School Day. The next slide is the breakdown of what the College Board calls benchmarks. And these benchmarks measure, according to the College Board's determination, the percentage of students who have a 75% or greater chance of getting a C or better in a first semester college course. And while some of the numbers look a little low, and you may be saying, well, that doesn't look too good. If you compare our numbers with the state and with the nation, we are right on par or even above in most cases. And this is only one factor. This is just the opinion of the College Board saying that this is one way of determining if students are going to be successful at a grade of C or better in a first semester college course.
And future steps, many of these steps have already been ongoing. And if a parent or a student would like more information on how to access these services, I recommend that they contact their college and career liaison, and each one of them are housed in the high school. That's what we have for this evening.
If the student, does the student have the option of not reporting his results to the colleges? I assume that's the case, correct?
That is an option, yes. So they can take the SAT during our School Day administration and just get the results personally. And then if they decide they want to share those, they can do that after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I didn't have any.
Any questions? I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to administer the SAT during the School Day, because when you take it outside of that one time, you do have to pay a fee. So this makes it a lot more accessible for a lot of students, so thank you.
That is the decision of this Board to not only make sure that we paid for it, which is above and beyond, and there's no funding that comes from someplace else. That's a decision made with local dollars. And then to move it into and make it during a School Day and have each one of the high schools then modify the schedule to be able to accommodate that. That really is something that we believe is a system, and the Board supports explicitly that everybody needs to have. And by that data, almost half of the graduating class the last year, that was their only, that really is quite telling that it's a good decision.
Well, right, because, I mean, with the class of 2022, I mean, it was like the Hunger Games trying to get into an SAT on a Saturday morning, because so many weren't running them. So that, I mean, it really was your only option was to take it here.
Yeah.
So, and.
And every one of our schools' average scores beat the state of Maryland's average score and the state's score. So national score, so state and national. So very nice. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Weaver. Attendance Awareness. Mrs. Long is back up.
I know.
Look, Jeff's even leaving now.
You're on, you're on.
Good luck.
She's got it. I don't know, it's a blank screen. That looks, that looks pretty intimidating. I see, oh, there goes the mouse.
No, I know. Do you see that? Takes a little bit to find that.
Yay!
There you go.
Well done.
We are, yes, cruising toward the end of September, although September is Attendance Awareness Month, but we are aware of attendance every single month.
Absolutely.
Yes, we are.
Every single day, every single month.
We're excited to be here and excited every year to come to present this to you.
But even before September, I wanted to let you know that, um, in all of our slides from the past too, we've always had the picture of Sam, so they're in the upcoming slides, so we always talk about attendance right out of the gate in, um, at our Back to School Fair, which we had in August. So, um, you'll be able to see all the cute pictures of our mascot, which is Sam, which is School Attendance Matters, and our lovely, um, PPW son is the one that always comes out and always does a great job at that event, so that's coming up. But, um, this year's theme is to stay connected and keep learning, and of course, attendance is a sense of belonging, building relationships, and creating a wel- welcoming, supportive community. And we just wanted to remind parents that absences really do add up. It is so important to come to school every day, bell to bell. And I just, for example, if a student is absent twice a month, um, for nine months, that totals one full month of school that they are missing. And a lot of parents, they just don't realize that until sometimes you're sitting in an attendance meeting, and you're going through their attendance, and, you know, it's just like, oh my gosh, I miss so much time. So we just wanted to make you aware of that.
And schools are constantly, um, working to encourage students to be there every day. Um, there are MTSS and PBIS, um, folks work, uh, put incentives in place and, um, different plans for them to just, you know, um, I create a positive school culture for students, you know, to encourage them to attend. Also, we have attendance teams when we see students, uh, kind of have two or three absences in a row, or, as Kate said, um, throughout the month, if attendance start adding, attendance is, if, if missing school starts adding up, the attendance teams from, of the PPWs, um, the nurse, school administrators, uh, school psychologists, the counselors, all come together to see what kind of, um, services or supports we can provide a family, um, to assist with that. And that's where our community partnerships come into place too. We're linking families to resources in our community to maybe, um, help break down barriers that they might be experiencing. Also, mentoring programs after school, um, are important for our students, another way for, for us to, um, engage students, but also engaging the families is important as well. And of course, it's so important to start, uh, with early intervention at this, at those young ages.
So this next, next picture, I know it's so small, but those girls were so excited to take a picture with Sam. Um, but we just wanted to remind parents, um, of how they could help, and it's really important to maintain those daily routines, uh, make sure that those medical appointments are always made after school, um, especially vacations and things. Please. Um, get your child to school every day, unless, of course, they're sick. Um, all makeup work, to make sure that your child doesn't get behind if they, you know, are absent from school, so make sure that they make up all, up all of their work. And, um, if your child does seem anxious about going, to please just talk to a teacher, um, reach out to the school counselor to support your child in any way. Are there any comments?
I want to thank you for, um, Sam, the, the mascot.
Thank you.
And I was at the Title One, um, program at Green Holly School, and Sam was there, and he was a big hit with the students. So we started very early in educating even the students, the, the littlest ones, about the importance of going to school and being in school every day, because if you're not in school, you're going to miss out on a lot of learning and fun activities. So I really appreciate the effort to make it positive for all age-level students, so what you do is appropriate for each group, elementary, middle, and high, the importance of attending school on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, so we have nothing, board reports, does anyone have anything?
I, I do. Um, let me find it, give me an opportunity to find it here. Okay. Mrs. Weaver and I attended the PEP kickoff at the Patuxent River Naval Air Stations, Station, so the gates are open at the air station for our school system in Calvern and St. Mary's County. And it's called the Personal Excellence Program, and the commanding officer, Captain Kingsley, greeted us and spoke to us on how the PE program made a difference in his life. And this is what he said, "I would not be in the position that I am in had it not been for the military who came to his school and mentored him," unquote. "I know there are military and civilians on base who would love to mentor our students, and it could make a profound change in their lives, as it did for Captain, um, Kingsley." On Friday, um, so that was on Friday, September, uh, twenty-third. After that, uh, we went on a tour of the Naval Test Pilot School, and principals from the following schools were presented with a, uh, certificate to, for the pledge, quote, "to work together to improve the education, fitness, and citizenship of all students, and promote school-community relations." Uh, the principals there, or they're designated, were from Great Mills High School, Leonardtown Middle School, Leonardtown Elementary, and Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, and they received certificates of recognition. And I want to thank them for partnering with our good neighbors at the Naval Air Station. The PEP program provides the following services to our school community: tutoring, mentoring, job shadowing, tours of the Naval Air Station, field trips, summer programs, lunch buddies, expos and demonstrations, apprenticeships and internships, job opportunities for students, speeches by experts, and volunteers for various school events, such as Career Day, School Fair Days, multicultural days, science fair judges, and other events. Uh, we were given a form to fill out if a school would like a field trip to the base, and also they list, it was about three pages of tours that you can take, and they were excellent, and a lot of them were STEM-related tours. So I'll give that form to the superintendent, uh, that you fill out, whatever you want, mentors, tutors, whatever, they are willing to help. They are service, they believe in giving back to their community, and I will also give the superintendent the list of field trips that our students can take to the Naval Air Station. So I thank, um, the commanding officer Kingsley for opening the gates, that we had an opportunity right here in St. Mary's County, that other school systems do not have that expertise and scientific knowledge that we have at the base. So, um, I appreciate the PEP program and all the volunteers, military and civilians, who come out to help our students. So no student should be without a mentor if they need one. Thank you.
And I will share quickly that, um, I was, um, uh, very honored recently to be appointed to the Board of Trustees for the College of Southern Maryland. Um, and, uh, the ability to, um, hopefully work to, um, re-engage, um, on a, on a deeper level with CSM, um, because th- they're significant partners, uh, and the, and the, you know, ability for students to be dual-enrolled and receive, um, community college credit, uh, and, and just how big a savings that is, and what incredible programs they have. Um, I'm thrilled to be able to, um, be a part of that conduit, and so, um, I will be reaching out through the superintendent to staff, um, so that I, I would like to have your ideas about, um, what, what I can do to, um, help facilitate some of those conversations that I know we've had in the past. Um, and with COVID and everything, I think some of those have, um, not been as robust, perhaps, as they have been. Uh, it is to our benefit to make sure that that happens, and I believe it's also to the benefit of College of Southern Maryland. Um, and so I will, I will keep you all posted, um, but, um, it was a huge honor, and I'm, I'm thrilled, uh, so. And the fact that I can stay on this board and, and do that work, um, I think is, is even better, so I'll, I'll keep you posted. That's it.
All right, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, October twelfth, at eight AM for executive session, nine o'clock for the full board meeting, and we are adjourned.